Right or wrong, present our cases and, and you know, do so in a, in a dignified manner. And what we do is we, we do it in grace. And so just to let everybody know ahead of time that, that if you do not act accordingly, I will gavel you as I did last, last month. In, in any event, bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, content agenda. Uh, we have the minutes of last month's meeting for approval. I'd like your motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the, uh, the prior meeting months as written without changes.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Roll call.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zimbello?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to our quasi judicial announcement. I am going to let our attorney explain what the quasi judicial now additional means in this particular forum and also to swear in any potential witnesses.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is the board's function to make law. It's, excuse me, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Uh, before I swear everyone in, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, can we disclose any ex parte communications or conflict of interest by the board?
Does anybody have any ex parte communications with the, the, the items that are presented today? There are none?
Thank you, Chair. If you're going to speak, please raise your right hand.
Stand, please.
Please stand and raise your right hand. That's, that's on me. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm your testimony before the planning and zoning board shall be the truth so help you? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Uh, moving on to our first, uh, presentation is Resolution 2025 dash zero five. And this is a companion. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. This, and this is quasi judicial.
Good evening, Pat McNeese Planning Supervisor. This is a request for rezoning for the Jallow, what's called, being called the Jallow Family subdivision. Um, the request, this property is located between North Highland Avenue and Keystone Road and the, it's in two future land use categories. The uplands are in residential very low and it has wetlands on site that are in preservation. The future land use map categories will not be changing. The applicant would like to, uh, rezone a portion of this property that's in residential plan development, rezone that to agriculture so that the entire property is in agriculture. The whole property is, um, about forty six acres in size. Uh, the portion, uh, that's the subject of the rezoning is a total of about thirty two and a half acres. The RPD covers about nine point three acres of that. And the applicant is present to address this. So you all have seen this site before. This is some, what's some people popularly know as the McAlpin property, uh, up off of Keystone Road. Um, I included into staff report kind of a history of, of that property on the second page. It's kind of a long, long history of how it got annexed into the city and what it was previously used for, uh, the borrow pit that, that, you know, was a, um, commercial borrow pit for years. And so some of you may be familiar with it. So this, um, uh, and just to hit on these some land use designations. So again, in the city, residential very low, and then the, um, green is the preservation. The zoning is agriculture and residential plan development. The RPD is expired. It, it was never built. It's expired. Um, and, um, and this was before the Keystone Road improvements were made. Uh, since, since that zoning was put in place, the county bought a portion of that property. As you can see on the aerial, they developed a, a portion of that with, uh, storm water handling for Keystone Road. So again, that is an expired RPD. This is the county context. All that, um, unshaded area on this map is all in unincorporated Pinellas County. And as you can see, um, this is, this is basically the northeast area of our city and surrounding that area is pretty much all residential rural in Pinellas County and then preservation that covers the, the wetlands. Um, we have the place based area map in our comprehensive plan now, and we're looking, um, just in general, if you remember, this is just a general guide of where our, um, transitional and future land use areas, um, are, are looking to go, um, in the planning horizon. This property is located in the agriculture residential estate area, um, in that northeast area of the city. Uh, and this is basically the property outlined in yellow that's being changed. This is the, um, thirty two and a half acres. And most of it, as mentioned, is agricultural. The RPD zoning is the portion that would be changed to agricultural. Um, this is a portion of the survey. You can see this, this area with all the topography is the uplands on site over to the east is the borrow pit and to the west is, um, basically on, uh, the open area there is, is the jurisdictional wetlands on site. Um, again, this is just the same, uh, survey and showing the zonings overlaid on the aerial photography. Uh, the, the site itself, the outlined in yellow, um, will be coming back to you as a site plan. The applicant has also applied for site plan approval for a four unit estate type subdivision on this property. Uh, so the first step is to get that zoning aligned with that estate subdivision that they're, they're currently processing. That's under review by the TRC Technical Review Committee. Uh, again, we don't need to go over the property history. Um, it is, uh, just to kind of touch on. This one's kind of hard to see, but, but this was used again for a commercial borrow pit, um, stockpiling of, of materials, mulch. Um, there were agricultural activities on and off over the years, goats and other types of, of activities like that. So it's, it's got a history to it. You saw this, um, parcel back in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two timeframe, there was a fifty unit plan development proposed on it. The Board of Commissioners denied that request. So, um, the, the, uh, the property remains under the same ownership that it did. Um, and the total is again, almost forty six acres. This portion for the rezoning, uh, is just covering the proposed estate subdivision area. So the agricultural zoning for this area is consistent with the future land use map, the place based area, places based area map and with the comprehensive plan. As far as compatibility and available uses, um, I would say probably the two biggest things with the, with basically the down zoning from RPD to ag is we're going to restrict the uses. It opens up agricultural uses in this area. They really are kind of, um, accessory in the small scale. I think we have a dog kennel nearby. We have limited, um, horse, you know, uh, horses on some of the properties in unincorporated, um, including one adjacent, uh, those types of activities. Going from RPD to ag will limit the, uh, housing product to single family detached, whereas RPD has the full suite of, of housing types. Um, it will also, uh, significantly increase the minimum lot size from ten thousand to thirty thousand square feet and a lot width to two hundred square feet. Uh, I'm sorry, lot width to two hundred feet. So those are probably the biggest changes. Uh, the full changes are outlined on page three of your staff report in that table. So we feel like this change is compatible and more consistent with the area. Again, this will promote efficient northerly development. It follows that place based area and future land use pattern that we're looking for through the twenty forty five planning horizon. And the property is currently served by city fire and emergency services, um, and law enforcement. We can serve it with solid waste. Uh, the rest of the service, water, sewer and the adjacent roadways are all under Pinellas County. Um, this is relatively, again, relatively low impact to services because it's, it's really a lower service area. Um, this will also restrict, uh, the amount of traffic going on to Keystone Road. If you remember, that's a scenic, uh, road with limited access, um, pursuant to, to the county's long range plans. And so this, this portion of property is technically allocated thirty two units. Um, again, the applicant will be coming back to you for four units. So, um, it's really, uh, bringing it back in line with that future vision. If there's anything I missed. So staff is recommending approval of this rezoning. Um, the TRC reviewed this on December fifth, twenty twenty four. Uh, the notice went out to sixty three addresses. There was no public comment received. There was one inquiry, inquiry from a neighbor, um, which was, uh, the information was provided, but there was no comment. Are there any questions on this?
Typically, we started on that end last month, so this time we're going to start on this end.
Thank you, Pat. Um, I have just a few questions. So the, on, uh, on the staff report number seven, where the Board of Commissioners denied the fifty lot residential, um, plan development. If I recall, that was a, I want to say six to one vote in affirmative vote on the planning and zoning board, correct? Or five to one?
I do remember the planning and zoning did recommend approval. I did not look up to check.
Okay. I just remember there was one dissenting vote.
Okay.
So with the subsequent sale, is that, I, I was under the impression that they, um, because I know that that applicant had been to TRC like seventeen times. So with the subsequent sale, like they, they're not, that's not possible anymore, obviously, because of the sale of the forty five acres that...
The current owner authorized this applicant to apply. I, I do not, the, the applicant's representative is here so he can talk about whether there is an actual sale in progress. I don't, I don't have knowledge of that. But, um, but yeah, so thi- this rezoning went to TRC once.
And then, um, under the conditional uses for the current, um, residential plan development to proposed, uh, I'm, I see some of the new, uh, conditional use, um, examples for excavation, kennels, veterinary clinic. Does this include the current conditional uses? And then this is on top of that? Or does this saying that these are the only conditional uses that they could be applied for, for the proposed?
Yes. The conditional uses listed under agriculture would replace those of the RPD.
Okay. So like excavation, what kind of, can you explain what that, like, could look like?
That would be, um, like, that would basically be the commercial borrow pit use.
Okay.
That's what that authorized.
And, um, there's a question I had was when we, uh, when we had Merle's proposal, but I think it was like right before his last meet, you know, before his last meeting, didn't we do the rezoning and the site plan and the, like, didn't we do all three at, like, at one time?
Um, I'm not sure which.
Maybe someone else on the board?
Mr. Siemens, that was an annexation. Is that what you're talking about?
It was an annexation, right, with the site plan.
Yeah, he didn't have a site plan. Um, that, the, the rezoning goes along with the annexation, so that...
I think, I think, I think we did all of it at, at one time, if I remember.
I mean, he, he can't really propose a site plan until he's in the city, which that hasn't been adopted yet.
Okay. And, um, there were no other comments in on here from TRC than just what's on here?
No. The only outstanding issue from December was that the applicant needed a legal description of the thirty two and a half acres to put with the ordinance. It took them a, a couple of months to get that. So, um, we, we, you know, and we were looking to get this rezoning in place so that the site plan could proceed to, to hear it.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah, with an adopted rezoning.
Um, just want to go back on the excavation. So as I understand it, there's an existing borrow pit. Additional allow them to continue to use that borrow pit for excavating dirt, probably for sale.
Um, I mean, they can propose that as a conditional use. Uh, and, and I will tell you, it isn't a staff report, um, but I didn't really highlight it here. Um, let me just go back on, on the remainder of the property that's not outlined in yellow. They are proposing a residential plan development of thirteen units that will also be coming to you. That's also under review at TRC. Uh, they really aren't proposing, uh, any use of the borrow pit. I, I would venture to say that that borrow pit has been exhausted. Um, they are going to use it as part of their storm water handling. Uh, since that borrow pit was dug, uh, the McAlpin family sold off the, the original home. So that's the gentleman, just, just say that they inquire when things come up and he's kind of tracking things. I, well, the applicant, the, the applicant is here. I, I haven't heard that, that the current owner, uh, plans to do any excavation. I, I would venture to say they've been trying to sell it. And of course, the, the applicant can address whether, um, there's any proposed, but that would be quite a, um, complex undertaking as far as a site plan, if, if somebody were to propose that.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Pat, for, uh, for the background information especially. It seems there's more to the show behind the curtain, uh, with this currently and would be nice to see it all at one time as, uh, as may have alluded to. But my question is, the current RPD outline there, is that where the four unit subdivision will take place or will be somewhere else on the property to your knowledge?
The four units, the four unit subdivision will be inside this yellow line.
Okay.
Um, part of it will be on the RPD. It's going to have, it's going to be built on the uplands.
Okay.
Which, if you go to this drawing, all this topo goes down here.
Right.
Up through here and here, that's where the four units will be built.
Okay. So this is more for the sake of unity and to increase the area of the agricultural zoning?
Yeah. And to retire the defunct RPD.
Right.
And to bring, bring this area more in line with our, uh, future land use.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions, but I see this rezoning as a positive change.
I'm sorry. So, so Pat, we're talking about seven, seventeen potential units with the four and then the thirteen would be a phase two? Is that what, is that what's happening?
Uh, well, it's a separate application, but that, that's what's currently proposed, yeah.
Okay. And what's the minimum lot size if it was rezoned at this point? What becomes the minimum lot size to build on there?
Agricultural, it would be thirty thousand square feet.
How does that translate into acreage?
Uh, an acreage is forty three, five, sixty, so, um...
Okay.
I don't know. What is that? You know, almost any, I mean...
Does the seventeen homes doesn't necessarily max out the scope of that land?
Oh, no. So this, this land is allocated, um, one unit per acre.
Okay. Let, let, sorry, Pat, but let's be clear. What we're talking about is a current application.
Yes.
Okay. I, I know there's some concern about the additional, when they reapply for the additional units, but we, you know, let's keep our focus to this original application. And then the concerns that we have with regard to the other density on the other, would be on another application. I think we need to address it then instead of today.
Yeah. And, and I'll just say there would be no change with this rezoning to the allocated density under future land use. It's still one per acre.
Okay.
So the entire property being forty five point seventy six acres is allocated forty six units, and that would not change.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. I, I only have a few questions. I think, uh, and density was one of my questions, but you're, you're saying that the density for this particular application is four units?
Um, the entire property...
No, no, no. This application.
For the, the yellow area, it's, um, thirty three, thirty two units, sorry.
I thought you said four, four resident.
Well, yeah, that's going to your point is that you, there, there is currently a proposal to build four that is in process with Technical Review Committee, and it, it will get to you, but right now it is not.
Now, let me go back and maybe I cut you off too, too soon.
Yeah.
But from my understanding of your presentation, you're not, they're not talking about building thirty something units. They're talking about building four and the density would be four? Or are we, do we grant them the four? And I, I just want to be clear when we go into the density, maybe that's a question for the applicant because i- if they're looking at building a family compound, okay, for four units, that's one thing with regard to density. And then part two of their application would be on another date, would be to, to, uh, or fourteen units at a, at a, would be, if you want to call it part B.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the density, the density does not change. So for the third, the thirty two acres, it'll be thirty two units. What will change is it'll only be single family and the lots will be thirty thousand square feet. And remember, they are not going to be able to build in the wetlands, and I probably should have given you the upland acreage. But it would be very, very, under agricultural zoning, I'll just venture to say that there's, there's no way they could fit thirty two units on this property, regardless of what they're proposing now. And the applicant can probably speak a little more to it.
Okay. Will this require annexation? Or you said part of it is, is unincorporated?
Uh, no, I was talking about the surrounding area. This entire property is annexed in.
Okay. And, and if, with regard to the, the existing borrow pit, if that was something they, obviously it'd be more difficult to do in a site plan, but isn't that a separate application as well? A permit?
If they were to propose it, it would be...
It'd be a separate permit?
Yeah, it would be conditional use and site plan. They would have to come back through the entire process.
Okay. Um, and the access or that, would, would that be on the Keystone or that on the back road?
The...
Or there's more than one access point?
Yeah. The access for this property outlined in yellow, uh, is currently proposed in the application reviewing to come off of North Highland.
Okay. Okay. Um, now that I've asked questions and everybody else has asked question, we can have round two, so.
I have, I have one.
Okay.
Sorry. Did I, I read somewhere, Pat, in your report or your materials? Forgive me, I was just trying to find it, um, that a lot of the nature has already been disrupted in this area. Do you remember something like that?
Well, on, um, let's see, on page two of my report, I described what's been, what has occurred on the property itself over the years. Uh, single family residents that still exists and was sold off, uh, borrow excavation, farming and grazing operations, stockpiling of materials. From what we know, um, there is a, um, still a, yep, large metal barn or storage structure on the site. Uh, so, yeah, it, it's, it's a little bit degraded, I think, just because it was used for agriculture and other activities.
Wow. Thank you.
Okay. With the applicant, I'd like to make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Hushkovahi. I'm with Northside Engineering located in Clearwater, three hundred South Boucher Road. I have been sworn in. Thank you for giving your time, talent and treasure to your community. Uh, it's invaluable. Also publicly, I would like to state that the staff's been wonderful. Love to be working with your staff, Pat, Ali, Renee, just, just loved it. To zoom in on the project, um, as Pat had stated, um, we, what's before us at Northside right now, and we have presented it to the city, is a whole site that's been divided in two parcels. Parcel to the north will be considered Jallo family compound. And parcel to the south will be Keystone, Keystone subdivision. What's before you tonight is merely the Jallo family parcel to the north. And as the chairman stated, the Keystone subdivision will be another project for another day which will come before you. So what we are here for is to rezone the RPD to agricultural. And that is generally speaking staff-driven. In other words, the city is trying to clean up the records to make the whole thing agricultural. We're not asking for any density increase. We're just trying to clean up the records. That RPD that you see is, I'm going to say it's all of it actually, is in the Duke Energy Easement. There's a Duke Energy easement that covers that RPD. So we are not, generally speaking, are able to build any structures. We may be able to put roadway in, which we will be in the future across it. But it would have to be approved by Duke Energy staff. So, but in this, in this portion of the land, we're only proposing to build four units. And the four units are, as I had stated, is for Jallo family. He has a couple of children and, you know, daughter, boy, son, so forth and so on. So he would like to make that his own personal compound per se. The borrow pit that's been discussed is really a giant retention pond, basically, that we are going to be using for drainage. We're not planning on digging anything. It's already there. So we are just calculating to see the volume that it can provide for drainage and we'll be using it for both parcels. The site to the south, just a little bit, just to state just something quickly about that, is going to Pinellas County for driveway connection to Keystone Road. So we're going back and forth with the county Board of Adjustment to address that. So that's, again, another project for another day. So our main access will be off of North Highland. We are proposing to put a wall between the two subdivisions and possibly having a gate for fire truck access. So Mr. Jallo would like to keep the two parcels separate and that's basically one way to do it. I just cannot remember any other concerns that this board might have had or I have, I may have heard. But if I missed something, I would be more than happy to explain that.
We'll start again on.
I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, nope, I do. Okay, so I'm familiar with the Jallo family. And when you and I, first part it said Jallo, Jallo family, I assumed that was, would you say, family compound? You know, I don't think he's going to have any more kids. But, but, but the question that I have for you is, you know, you're going to look at, limit that to four residential, probably very nice residential units. Are you going to, maybe this is a question for a city, for staff, are they going to have to plat those four units? I'm sorry?
Yes, they will be platted.
Platted, so once they are platted, then those are, not that they're set in stone, but you'd have to come back in and do a lot more if you wanted to increase the density once they're platted?
That's not even on the radar.
Okay, I'm just asking the question because you're presenting us four units for that particular large tract of land, which I think it's great to have that type of environment. But, but, well, that's why I'm asking if it's platted, you know, then.
Absolutely, it's actually in, we have submitted the preliminary plat with the project. Now, I'm glad you asked that question because I remembered one other item that I had forgotten to address. And that's the ownership. So Mr. Jallo right now has the property under contract and he will be purchasing it.
Once we get approved.
Once we get this approved.
I understand, okay. I have no more questions, anybody else, based on what I said?
Like, I think, I'm sorry, could you elaborate on your knowledge of the Jallo family for the record?
Well, actually, if you go to Keystone, Klosterman and Nineteen, there's a car wash. That's Jallo family, they own several, that's, they have multiple business interest entities. Wonderful family, but that's, you know, it doesn't matter if they're wonderful or not. We've got to look at this from, you know, an independent eye. Nick, you said you had a question?
The parcel land with the four units, is that zone agricultural?
Yes.
So when the four homes' units go on, is that?
Yes, we don't, we don't have to rezone this. We can leave it as is and still have the four units.
Does that mean that the four homes will get an agricultural exemption from a tax perspective?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you have, if you can throw goats and animals on it, I think you can possibly get some credit. But I'm not really in that environment.
Yeah, I believe that's mostly for.
The size of the.
Yeah, agriculture is the primary use. You're not, just what little I know from my last job in Hernando County. Yeah, a lot of people were planting pine trees on old golf courses to get exemptions. Yeah, it's got to be, I think, the primary use, but I'm not.
Ex cows, ex cows.
Trees, hard.
That's for, that's for, I'm sorry, that's the next, sorry, that's the.
I do have one more. So. I know that the borrow pit is more like a retention pond. Do you perceive as the engineer, that when they go to do the other development, that they'll need fill for the foundations?
If they need fill, let me just give you a general response. They will not be excavating on this property. In other words, let me, let me just back up. Excavating is a word that I probably shouldn't use. They will not excavate for a retention pond, but they may excavate maybe the top of the hill just to make a smooth roadway.
But is it a very, that they will excavate for the purposes of landscaping, berm, banks? But they won't be excavating for the use of additional fill for where they're going to be building?
Okay, any other? I remember that, that, that pit, I think goes back forty-five years or better. So in any event, I think it's tapped out and I think.
As long as I've been alive.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, I'm older.
At this point, I'm going to go ahead and close. Well, is there any public comment with regard to this? Have we received anything with regard to this?
No comments, no.
Okay, then at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the public aspect of this application and open it up for the board for any discussion. Let's start with a motion, then we could have a discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five.
I'll second it.
Okay, now, is there any discussion on this? Okay, let's roll call, please.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkoudis?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, on to our next matter on the agenda. Let me get back to the agenda. Okay, next item is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. This also is quasi-judicial, conditional use for the agricultural use of a pet miniature cow. Staff?
Alekeem, Principal Planner, Planning and Zoning. Again, this is a conditional use request under Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. It's for the property located at six sixteen North Florida Avenue. The property is point three-three acres in size, has a current land use of RL Residential Low and a current zoning of R one hundred, single-family residential. The applicants are here today requesting conditional use approval to allow an agricultural use on their property for the purpose of allowing a miniature cow as a family pet. Now, I'm going to let the applicants provide more details about miniature cows and what goes into raising and having one on their property. But a few highlights are, when full grown, they can be between thirty-two and forty-eight inches tall. They can either have horns or not have horns. The applicants indicated that they would be adopting one without horns. When they are not being used for breeding or for meat production, their diet can be supplemented with hay and grain, which is what they're proposing to do, which reduces the area that's necessary for grazing. And then depending on the temperature, they will drink between three and nine gallons of water a day. The property, again, is located off of North Florida Avenue. It's outlined in red here on the screen. Surrounding zoning is R one hundred and R one hundred A, both of which are single-family residential zoning districts. The area is primarily single-family residential with exception of the Tarpon Springs Middle School, which is south of the property off of Sunset Drive. Okay, the R one hundred zoning district allows agricultural uses with conditional use approval if the underlying future land use category is either residential rural, residential suburban, residential low, or residential urban. Again, with this property having the future land use category of residential low, that is what is allowing them to come before you today for the request for conditional use. The Land Development Code has a fairly detailed definition for agriculture, which is shown here on the screen. But within that definition, it does call out animal raising and grazing. And within that, it states that animal raising and grazing means the keeping of one or more animals commonly associated with agricultural use, but not, including but not limited to cows, horses, pigs, goats, sheep, ducks, turkeys, chickens, geese, roosters, ponies, and other similar animals. It specifically does not include any sort of typical household pets. Within these city's municipal code ordinances, which is something separate than the Land Development Code, there is a section that addresses animals. Back in two thousand and thirteen, that was amended to allow residential properties to have up to four chickens on their property. Other than chickens, the city does not allow any sort of farm animal on residential properties that are less than two and a half acres in size. This is fairly inconsistent with the Land Development Code because there is no minimum size requirement for agricultural uses. This is a look at the survey of the property. The existing house is situated to the front. There's a large detached garage towards the back of the property. There is a existing six-foot-tall PVC privacy fence, which is enclosing a majority of the property. It's the blue shown here on the screen. There is an existing swimming pool and that is separated from the rest of the backyard with a four-foot-tall fence shown here with the orange. The applicants have indicated that the miniature cow would be able to freely roam throughout the majority of the backyard, with the exception of the pool area. They have also indicated that they would be constructing a barn-style shed that would provide shelter to the cow. That structure would be required to meet any sort of applicable zoning or building code requirements and would require a permit, depending on the size of the structure, which is anything above a hundred square feet. When looking at your conditional use criteria, it is in conformance of the Land Development Code. Again, the proposed shed would have to meet any sort of applicable zoning and building code requirements. And this was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee back in their February meeting. When looking at the surrounding area and looking at compatibility, the property is in a developed residential area. Typical agricultural uses such as crop production, forestry, animal breeding, training, and stabling can have significant impacts on surrounding properties, depending on the intensity of the operation and the context of the area in which it's located. The proposed request is limited to one farm animal intended to be a family pet. So it's a different context and situation than a typical agricultural use. However, farm animals can create odor and noise that can cause potential nuisance to neighboring properties. The applicants are aware of this and they did provide a waste management plan as well as a grooming plan, which was provided with your application materials. And they can provide more details about that when they have their time to speak. There are also some existing features on the property to help provide some screening, the privacy fencing that's existing, the positioning of the structures on the property, as well as there are several mature trees to provide some screening of the animal, may help to minimize some of those impacts that we discussed. This is an aerial photograph. It's dark to see here, but the property, oops, the property is outlined here in yellow. This property, as well as other properties on this block, but primarily the central properties, are much larger than a lot of the surrounding properties. They're about a third of an acre in size. And you can see that there are some dense foliage with mature trees providing some screening. But again, looking at surrounding context, it is a residential area, so it needs to be taken into consideration. The Tarpon Springs Middle School, again, to the south off of Sunset Drive. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, although the RL future land use category is intended for lower residential density, the Land Development Code does recognize that in some situations agricultural uses might be appropriate in the R one hundred zoning district. The conditional use process allows for this in-depth review of a request to determine compatibility. And it allows for you guys to make potential reasonable conditions to help lessen that impact to the neighborhood. The twenty forty-five comprehensive plan that was just recently adopted does have a policy in the future land use element that recommends reviewing the Land Development Code permitted in conditional uses to support urban agricultural uses. However, the policy does not address raising of farm animals in urban settings. It's more so focused on urban crop production, you know, community gardens, local food production, and things of those nature. The site is not located in the historic district nor on an environmentally sensitive site. And the applicant's waste management plan helps to address potential concerns with nutrients produced by the animal's waste. When looking at the adjoining property values, again, being that the property is primarily in a residential area, that is something that we have to take into consideration. The property will continue to be a single-family residence and the proposed use would not require any modifications to the property, aside from the structure to be a shelter for the cow. And that is a similar structure that you would see on other residential properties. Potential nuisances that are associated with the farm animal in a more urban setting, such as noise and odor, should be considered. However, this is really an intangible measure of impact on actual property values over a long period of time. The existing features that I discussed earlier, the privacy fencing, positioning of the structures on the property, the mature vegetation, as well as the limitation of one miniature cow on the property, does help to minimize that impact. So based on the information that we have available at this time, we do believe that property values will not be significantly affected. And lastly, touching on public health and safety and welfare, being that the property is fully enclosed with a six-foot fence, it will contain the mini cow to the backyard of the property. They have provided a waste management and grooming plan to help mitigate some of the concerns that are typically associated with a farm animal. And with all conditional uses, the board must review the proposal with the applicant and the public with all their comments and consider any potential conditions that are seen necessary. With that, staff does recognize that this is, there are some unique circumstances with the requested conditional use. Should the board recommend approval? We do have two conditions that we are recommending. The first is the agriculture use is limited to the raising of one miniature cow on the property. No other farm animals or agricultural activities that are specified in the definition of agriculture would be permitted. And then the second is any type of commercial activity that would be associated with the miniature cow on the property would be prohibited. So no paid visitations, parties, or photography sessions would be allowed. The application was properly noticed. There were seventy-nine mailed notices. We received one response that was included in your packet prior to going out and that was in opposition of the request. Since then, we have received four additional letters. They were provided to you prior to the meeting, two of which were in opposition and two were in support of the request. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
As we started here last time, we're going to start on this end this time.
Okay, so do we, do we know, is this an adopted animal or is it something you're purchasing? How is it that this, can, can?
I think these are, the first part is questions to the staff and then when the applicant has his presentation. has his presentation.
We don't know the answer to that yet. Is there any restriction for other residences in that area to ask for the same rezoning? Is it a limited zoning, or can everyone ask for this now?
So it's not a rezoning of the property. It's a conditional use, so it's something specific to this property that they are asking to do on the property. So it's still remaining residential zoning. In any property that has the same zoning in the R100 district, they can request a conditional use for an agricultural use if they have an underlying future land use of one of these four uses. They could come through the same process. They would have to come before the board for the same review, and we'd have to look at the property. Just because one application may be appropriate in one location, it may not be appropriate in another situation, so you have to look at them individually.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. One was the fence, the privacy fence. I believe these animals could weigh approximately 500 pounds or so. Is that correct for a mini cow? Or do I have to wait on that?
I'll let the applicant talk about the specifics.
As far as the fence, I know it's a privacy fence, but I did read somewhere that maybe you need to make sure that's a little bit stronger than our normal privacy fence.
Okay.
Secondly, I thought I had read somewhere on here that the cow would be able to roam in the back, but also be able to go in the front with somebody with him. And is this the, I know this house, and I know where it's at. Fence goes up, doesn't go in front of the house. So I'm wondering, will they take this cow in the front of the house? Or maybe I have to ask that, right?
So based off of the exhibit that was provided with the application, the cow would be able to freely roam within the area that I have within the blue line, and they indicated under supervision. So I'm assuming when they're with the cow and with proper restraints, I'm assuming they would be able to have it in the front area. But they can talk about their plans.
Let's see. And maybe they can answer this, but they did say they had many dogs, and I did read that mini cows are pretty friendly and easygoing, but I don't know how many dogs, I could ask them how many dogs they have and whether or not they're all going to get along. And the waste is of concern to me, and I have no idea. I'm a city girl, so I don't really know how noisy a cow can get. And I read that as long as they get their attention or whatever, they're not that noisy. But if a bunch of dogs are chasing it, who knows? But okay, I guess I'll, and I am happy that it's a pet. There won't be any milk or any of those things with it. Okay. It's an interesting city girl.
Was there any mention of, or any prohibition on breeding, anything like that? I know other things were talked about in the reading materials, but breeding didn't seem to be prohibited.
Well, within the definition, it doesn't specifically prohibit anything of that nature. They are not proposing to do that based off the application, so I don't, I don't think they're intending to do that. And we are also recommending a condition that they're limited to one cow on the property, and I don't think they want multiple cows.
And I know we can ask the applicant, but was there any indication of how big these mini, or small these mini cows are?
As far as height, they can be between 32 and 48 inches tall, yes. Weight-wise, I'll let them say that. Up to four feet.
Thank you.
Thank you for a very unique presentation, Ally, very well explained. My only question, and it might be directed to counsel, is how conditional can a conditional use be as far as a trial basis or a timeframe for assessment, especially by the neighbors? Because between noise and odor, there can be factors that are affecting, and they may not be, and they may be well managed, but I think time will be the tail for that. So I don't know how conditional or can, if approved, be rescinded, this special use if need be.
The answer to that is probably not. So once you grant it, it's allowed, runs with the land.
Thank you.
Okay. Next.
If I can just follow up with that, too. You also are able to place conditions on the approval that you, that are reasonable with the request that, you know, you feel would have to, that would mitigate potential concerns that you have, which is what we have requested here.
Thank you. Mr. Zabelas? Put your microphone on, please.
So I see breeding there, and breeding, can that be removed? If they're saying one animal?
In which one?
If they do breed, they could have a litter, and that litter could take weeks, months, maybe?
Can you refer to me where you're?
In your, in the proposed on?
Oh.
Look where it says, "The property is developed residential in typical agriculture such as crop production, forestry, animal breeding." So the applicant's applying for one.
Yeah. So in that explanation, I was, I was just referring to typical agricultural uses for comparison and to what is being proposed, which is basically one farm animal that's intended to be a family pet, so not for animal breeding. But you could add a condition, if you want very specific conditions, that the animal cannot be used for breeding.
That's my question.
Yeah.
That you could, yes.
Okay. My second question, under the current zoning, is there any regulations as to how many animals you can have under the current zoning without the conditional use?
So that would go to the municipal code, and it talks, you'd look at the household pets. I believe it's four, is that right, Pat? Four? I believe it's by type.
I'd like to know.
Yeah, Pat's gonna. I'll look that up for you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find, so household pet, unlimited to dogs. I don't know if there is a limit on dogs.
What other definitions for household pets?
Definition, household pet would include dogs, include but not limited to dogs, cats, marine and freshwater tropical fish, small non-venomous reptiles up to eight feet in length, hamsters, gerbils, hedgehogs, guinea pigs, tarantulas, rabbits, and birds.
So there is no limit of how many of those you can have?
If I find one, I'll let you know.
Any more questions?
There's usually a kennel definition that you can't have too many because it becomes a kennel. Yeah. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Ally, did you see that this was, application was fairly inconsistent with the Land Development Code?
Not necessarily the application. We were pointing out that, so you have the municipal code of ordinances that addresses animals, and then you have the Land Development Code, which is the use of your land. In the code of ordinances, it talks about you can't have farm animals on residential property within the city unless it's two and a half acres in size. The Land Development Code does not specify a minimum size for agricultural use. So we were just pointing out that there's an inconsistency there.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
That's it.
I have a few questions. To the extent that they, this thing was approved, does that impact the real estate tax at all? There's no tax cow, so to speak.
I would not assume so, but that is, I'll tell you, might hurt you.
Okay. Well, and to the extent there's an odor or noise problem, if this thing got approved, we have code enforcement that can address those issues. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah. And there's also animal control.
Right. I'm just trying to, some of the concerns that the other board members had presented. You know, when we talked about the fence, if you look at any ranch or everything, they don't have a full fence. They have posts and wires, and typically that's sufficient enough to corral whatever those type of animals or cattle in. So with regard to breeding, if they were to breed, they would have to actually, if you've got a miniature, sometimes you would look to breed it. They would have to remove that animal to a breeding place to breed it because they're only allowed one animal. Okay.
Yeah. And then I assume when it had.
You're not going to breed on premise, that's for sure. Okay. Any other questions based on mine or anybody else's? At this point, I'd like to, if the applicant can step down, your name, address, please. I think you've already been sworn.
Yes. Hi, my name's Sean Nelson. Property address is 616 North Florida Avenue in Tarpon Springs. I have a little statement for you guys, and then if you guys have questions, I'm more than happy to answer all of the ones that you guys have. So in front of you, you might have four or five. Last I heard, it was four comments from neighbors, two of which are neighbors next door on either side of our property that would be most directly affected, and two in opposition. The ones that are directly to either side of us have both sent in letters saying that they are not opposed to the proposed, the cow. One of the opposition letters is so far away that I'm not even going to address it because it's literally like, it's like a corner of their property was probably within the 500-foot radius because it's, you can't even see it from our house. However, there is one, and I'd like to specifically address, the socialism comments of the occupants at 609 North Florida. "I'm a federal law enforcement officer, and I risk my life every day for the community. I do it because I love this country, and for anyone to implicate that I don't love this country or that I want a socialist society is ludicrous. I would serve this country, and I would gladly lay my life down for it." So for that, that's that, that comment. It was very offensive to me. I work my butt off every day to keep you guys safe, keep my family safe, and that's that. "In regards to some of the other comments, we're not asking to change any of the rules. I researched this with the city code before starting this process. I spoke to Ally and to our specific zoning, allowing the agricultural conditional use if you guys approve it, and cows are directly named, as Ally also stated, along with all of the other animals that she stated in her presentation. There are other neighbors that I know that have had chickens approved without problem. There's also been a couple goats, from my understanding, that have been approved within the city limits. It seems like the most common complaints are noise flies and manure. So let me address those specifically. We have done our due diligence to minimize the impact to our neighbors as much as possible. There are farm fly traps available that can be put on the property to mitigate that concern. Also, this is a pet and not a traditional farm animal. It will get baths and regular grooming, which should significantly decrease, if not eliminate, the attraction of unwanted pests. I have found, and as provided in the waste removal plan, airtight containers for manure storage to minimize, if not also eliminate, the smell caused along with the regular disposal of the waste on my own dime, so that it should not cause impact. And as for the noise, because of my job, my wife, who has to put up with my job, is always at the house because we have four kids, and they need to go here, there, and everywhere. And so she isn't afforded the opportunity really to work outside the house with the number of kids that we have, so she's always there. So if, for some reason, the cow got upset and loud or whatever, it's not like there wouldn't be anybody there to tend to whatever need that it would have. We also own several dogs, as was mentioned, and we've been here now for several months, and none of our neighbors that we know of have ever complained about the smell of the dogs or the noise of the dogs because we are very on top of our animals. And I hope that that gives some reassurance to the board that we would do everything in our power to help keep that not being a problem should you guys approve the cow allowance. Odds per the area required for smaller farm animals. We've spoken at length to several farmers who have assured us that large acreage is not needed for these animals because of their size. Due to the type of grass in Florida, there's not enough nutrients to sustain cows specifically, so the grazing thing is always an argument that gets presented because you need acreage for cows, but we're not going to use it for meat or milk or anything like that. So what they informed us and what they advised us to do was to supplement with grains, vitamins, and hay to give them the proper nutrients. In one farm, and specifically, they have 10 acres, lots of grass. They supplement the exact same way that I just stated with grains, vitamin, and hay because their cows don't want to graze on the grass because it's not healthy enough for them. On another side note, and this is kind of somewhat relevant, but not really, my wife has already started discussing with Sunset Elementary with their school counselor about the possibility of having the cow brought to the school for therapy for kids with disabilities, behavioral issues, or just for comfort, once we get that, if we can get a certification for the cow, and we can work through the logistics of that with the school, and they seem to be on board with looking at that possibility. Due to the proximity of how close we are to the school, which is one full block to the north of it, it would be easy to develop the program if we got your blessing. We understand that there are restrictions with this. We do not plan to breed this cow. One cow, you can't really breed one cow. I mean, if we ever wanted to do anything where we would have to take it off property and have it serviced by a vet, it would not occur at the property. We don't want the noise associated with birthing a cow. We don't want multiple cows. I don't want multiple cows, trust me. I don't want any more headache than I need. And we don't want to disrupt our neighbors. We would do everything that we could possibly to protect the property and the surrounding community, and we just want to work within the confines of the existing code and not violate any of the code, and just use our property within the confines of what is allowed, which is why we presented it this way instead of just, you know, being somebody else that just goes out and it's like, screw it, I'm going to get a cow and throw it on the property. Like, wanted to go through the right steps with you guys to make sure, and obviously because of my job, I can't really skirt the rules. It's kind of an important thing with what I do. But yeah, any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to start at this end.
I don't have any questions, thanks. I do appreciate that you followed the rules and applied.
Mr. Zabelas?
No, no question, no questions. Thank you very much for your explanation. You sound like you would be and have been a responsible pet owner. That was my only concern, was this is a little out of the box as far as veterinary care and things like that, and conditions, and I would just ask that you adapt and graduate as needed should situations arise. Obviously, you have the blessing of your adjoining neighbors, which is a big plus. I've had up to six dogs at home, so noise, you know, they can be worse than a flock of anything. So I, it sounds like a great idea. You have the possibility of expanding the benefit to the community with the schools and stuff, so I commend you for thinking outside the box and acting outside the box, and thank you for your service.
Yes, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I would thank you for your service as well. Could you tell us which agency you work for?
Yes, I work for Homeland Security Investigations with the Department of Homeland.
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security Investigations with the Department of Homeland Security. So I'm a special agent with them, so we do transnational criminal organizations. So we're the ones trying to get the cocaine, heroin, fentanyl, child pornographers, predators, trafficking victims, money launderers, gangs, cartel, like basically all the high-level stuff out of the streets and, you know, out of our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next question, why not just a big dog?
We have big dogs.
Why do you need a little cow?
Oh, please, please come up, state your name. I think, have you been sworn? If not, we will swear you.
I'm not.
So please, please.
You swear or affirm your testimony before the planning and zoning board, shall be the true self of you.
Okay, your name, please.
Okay. My name is Carrie Nelson, Sean's wife. Oh, Corinne Nelson, sorry, my real name. So going off that, my, one of my sons and I, we both have ADHD amongst other issues that he has, which has presented issues along the way. I started doing dog fostering, instead of rescuing dogs when we lived in California. I'd never seen anything change the child, that it, just the way that it gave him something, it was soothing to him. So that's where dogs came into play, and I've always had a love for horses, were always very soothing to me. Now, our property cannot have a horse or a horse stable. Cows were also very close to my heart, and I started spending time at local farms up in Webster, Ocala area. And again, it kind of changed myself and my son, just seeing the interaction, and it's just something I've always wanted to pursue, and we're not in a position to be able to move around for his parents. His father is severely disabled, his mother is ill, and they live up the street from us. So we're in a place to stay where we can help care for them and keep our, their grandkids, the only grandkids they have, close to them. And so through doing the research, I asked him, would this be something we could ever do? You know, someday I'd love to own a ranch. Someday I'd love to have not a whole farm, but a mini farm, you know, something that we can grow old and. Something that we can grow old and the kids, their kids, so on. So I found that as we started doing, yeah, as we started doing everything and, and seeing how the cow kind of was soothing to both, like our, our whole family, it just became kind of, let's see where, where we can go with this. And we did find a cow, he's not ours unfortunately, um, yeah, we have to go through the proper steps, but, um, he is a pulled steer, so he cannot make babies, and he does not have horns, and he's, um, micro mini, so he'll probably be only about 37 inches of, eh, full ground. He had his own issues, uh, he was a bottle baby, which is actually good for us, because he only ever knew really human interaction. The farmers fed him, the cow didn't feed him, she wouldn't, she actually licked him raw where he had no fur left. He was a special case, and so it was hard for them to sell him, and so we started visiting every week. Every weekend we would go visit this cow, and we just became attached to it, so we're like, okay, if we were able to ever do this, the farmers were like, we want you to bring him home, like he, he would be perfect for your situation, so that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick note, uh, in one of the complaints, it was like, why don't you move to farmland? Because of my job, I'm required to be within 50 miles of, of a response radius for work, so that when the literal poop hits the fan, I can actually get to places fairly quickly. And I work in Pinellas County, and my main office is right next to the airport in Tampa. So where I live gives me a good radius to be able to respond north to Pasco, out to Tampa, or to South County.
Thank you.
Within a quick period.
Thank you.
Anymore?
You mentioned it was a micro mini, how, how, um, much do they weigh?
So, based on it, it's kind of a range, because depending on how tall they get and how much weight they put on, the range is between three to 500, depending on how much it eats, how big, how tall it grows and everything else, but we specifically targeted looking at animals that do not grow very high, so they can't get very heavy.
Okay, and you mentioned that, just like any other pet you would have, you wash it all the time.
Yep.
I just have a question, how do you wash, you know, with a hose or?
Yeah, you just take a little attachment, you put the soap in it, and you just spray it down and dry it off and.
So my other question was, have you purchased the cow already? Well, technically it doesn't sound like you purchased it, but you have lean that way. I don't know. That's the only questions.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I did have that, front of the house. Would you really take that out to the front of the house and then walk around with it? I know she's gonna take it to the school, so I should answer that question anyway.
You have a big.
Oh, yeah, so we do have access to, um, a trailer, so that we can get it to and from, um, vet visits and things of that such. And if we did a program with the school, um, therapy program that we can get it to and from, uh, but, uh, he would be leash harness trained, halter trained, so, um, since he was a bottle baby, they would bring him around and he would follow them around, and you basically put a little, like, halter, like noose type thing around their nose and their head, and you just guide him that way, because it gives you the most, um, leverage for the animal. But, uh, so it's kind of trained like a dog, um, more so than if it was just a cow that grazing out in the pasture. This is kind of like, in a way, more domesticated animal, the way it's raised on the bottle baby, so.
So one last question, then, like horses in a parade, will it have like a little, uh, you know, diaper or something when you're walking around outside?
Um, I, I would think that we would.
School?
Yeah, I would think that, well, so depending on the size, um, right now, it's kind of like a, um, Chihuahuas, turds. So as they do grow, they, they call them cow pies, they can get about this big. So you'd have shovel and like basically a dog poop bag of a bigger size. Could you do the bag? I think that a small horse bag could probably, um, fit around the, the waist and the back. I don't know if people have used them, and I could actually ask that, because one farmer, the. Yeah, yeah, the reason I, um, we actually came up with the idea for a school thing is because I knew of a farmer that did that with a pulled steer of his. He brought it to an elderly community, and that's why he had to have no horns. So I'll have to ask how he did that, how he managed if it had to go potty, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I just, uh.
We'll come back.
Well, your wife kind of turned me, I wasn't a big fan of this, to tell you the truth. So have you looked into, you know, the proper vet for a, a farm animal? Is it some, you, you didn't? Okay, and you do realize that that, that that cow's hooves are gonna make a mud pit of your backyard?
Yeah, um, to a certain degree, I mean, like I said, I haven't noticed it be a major problem, um, on the properties, and we do have quite a bit of, um, gravel area, uh, safe for their hooves, papers, yes. So, which hopefully will minimize that as well.
Are your dogs pretty social?
They are.
Will they interact with this animal?
Yes, and we've actually been bringing, um, one at a time over there to, to socialize. We do have a, a Frenchy who we probably won't, um, bring around him unsupervised, um, if, if this whole thing did happen. But the other, the big ones were, were our concern, so we brought them, and everyone's gotten along great. Like I said, they, the farmers have large dogs, and, uh, he's used to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, I guess it's my turn. First of all, again, thank you for your service. You know, the, the, the people like you and, and our local law enforcement, they, you know, I'm very, very fond of our first responders. Mr. Mathis, Mathis knows that, fond of me especially specifically. I don't have any questions, nor do I have any comments. I just, when I looked at this, um, application, had a lot of questions, but you, you answered most of them, like, you know, whose car does the, the pet get in when you gotta take it to the zoo, but you, you answered that one. And, uh, I didn't know if you were gonna get rid of your lawnmower and have a couple, that was a difference. In any event, um, I'm gonna open it back up to any follow-up questions, I think you had one.
I, I did, I just, you know, I feel the same as, as my colleague down here, when she said your wife charmed her, she charmed me as well.
She has that effect.
Nature, you know, the, you know, the whole story, I understand. But I'm just hoping, my question is, you understand our reluctance.
Of course, a hundred, that's why we went through the process, we wanted to come and talk to you guys, and it, it's one thing to put a piece of paper through the thing, it's a whole nother thing to talk to the person behind it, because you don't always get the full story just from reading a document, like, this isn't something that we were just like, hey, let's just do this. Like, we spent a lot of time researching and putting things together and talking with, uh, Ally, and going through all the other things to try and reassure everyone that, like, we understand that there's a, a burden on us to not disrupt the community, and we have no intention, nor do we want, we don't want pissed off neighbors, we like our neighbors, they're great, I mean, we have our neighbors here with us.
Yeah, it's only part of it, they do understand, that's only part of it.
No, no, of course.
I mean, we have to worry about the guy next door who wants a flock of peacocks.
All right, let's, let's move on, let's move on, uh, any other, any questions?
I do have one question. Have you at all spoken with your homeowner's insurance? Because I know they're getting tight on types of dogs and dogs for all liability issues. I mean, just wondering what they would think.
I haven't talked to them, but because this isn't a typical farm animal, that the farm thing doesn't really apply in terms of.
No, but they. They're already turning down people that have dogs. If you have a dog that is a propensity.
I'm just saying, if there's any questions relevant to the application.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
Oh, okay, it isn't.
Unless there's other questions, um, is there any, first of all, I want to take, uh, notice and into the record as to the, uh, letters that were received to be admitted into the record. I don't think we're gonna, I don't want to read them into the record, I just want to take the notice that they are of the record, that way they will be an attachment to the minutes. Okay? Any public comment?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Don't go too far, in case there's any rebuttal.
While we're waiting for that, um, I could not find a limit for the number of pets, dogs, or cats, but, uh, we are subject, our municipal code subjects the city to the county's animal control ordinance, which has voluminous, uh, standards for care, manner of keeping, neglect, abandonment, cruelty to animals.
Thank you, um, I'm gonna, I leave the comments, public comments to four minutes, so, um, please state your name and your address.
My name is Sia Privy, and I live on fifteen oh three East Tessier, um, directly behind, um, this family. I, I just came up here, I just want to say first, let me preface this by saying that I'm not looking for harassment or retribution for speaking up, but I'm concerned about the smell of the cow manure and the flies that it will definitely attract. I know that they have quite a few dogs, we hear them a lot, we don't say anything, because we want to be good neighbors. I would also like to address the welfare of the cow, cows are social creatures, they, they don't like to be alone. They, they do better in pairs, and I don't think that there's enough room in that side yard for two cows. I worry about the welfare of the cow. I'm wondering what they'll do during the hurricane season, what kind of shelter that they'll provide. Our backyard, a butts right up to theirs, right at the end of the backyard, and we have a fence that's, um, it's, it's wooden and it's old, I don't know how strong it is. And I just want to finish by saying, I like cows, I'm not against cows, but if I really wanted to live in a, um, a farming atmosphere, I probably would have chosen a property on Keystone. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other comments? Again, you're limited to four minutes, please state your name and your address, please.
Leslie Schittler, eleven oh seven Sunset Drive, I'm around the corner, approximately three yards, one, two, three yards away. I have some of the same concerns, obviously, as, uh, Mrs. Privy. Thank you for your service, your story is very endearing. I love animals, the, the notification, just seeing mini cows struck my heart, and I was instantly intrigued, but thinking of the realities of it is a different thing. Hurricanes, heat of the summer, dear Lord, help us all in the heat of the summer. I know you haven't been here that long, I don't know your personal story or experience with the heat or hurricanes in Florida. It's excruciating, and I would never want to see an animal suffering out in that heat. Another concern is safety for the children and the animals in the neighborhood. Say they were to halter him and other animals are around and they're not used to that. They're in instinctual creatures, and they, you don't always know the behavior or reaction of someone else's animal, which is scary, I've seen it. You seem like responsible people, done your due diligence, but I have concerns as far as this, um, what, what would it be, a conditional?
Conditional use.
Use? Your comment was very valid to me, that could we give this a timeframe? I would never want to see you get an animal and have to get rid of it, God forbid, but if the neighbors start experiencing or start having smell issues, I mean, I've been in that property before you bought that house, and it's very, it's mostly cement, you got a pool, you got, I mean, it's very limited, not that he needs a lot of space, but they should have a minimum of a, of a half to a full acre. Even if they're not grazing, they're social animals, they get around, I wouldn't ever want to see him get. Florida Avenue is a main artery in the west side of Tarpon. Traffic alone would be, break your heart to, if anything were to happen, but thank you for listening to my.
Thank you, any other comments? I guess at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, um, and open it up for the board. First before, um, okay, thank you. Before we have discussion, sometimes it's better to go ahead and make a motion in a second, and open it up for discussion is probably the best.
If I could provide one clarification before, um, in regards to the animal breeding, I believe the staff recommended condition number one, where it talks about where we state, let me go down to it. The agricultural use is limited to the raising of a maximum, the raising, um, of the maximum of one miniature cow on the property. No other farm animals or agricultural activities as specified under the definition of agricultural, um, is permitted. Uh, if you go back to the definition, it does state animal breeding as one of the other activities, so I do think that that's covered, um, under that condition, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I think, I think my initial concern, we didn't know whether it was a boy or a girl, and the cow could have been taken somewhere else to be bred and then come back and have babies, and that's where my thoughts were going, but I, thank you.
At this point, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and, and make a motion. If no, nobody wants to make one, I'll pass the gavel, do I hear a motion on the floor?
Well, I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen for the conditional use approval for the single, uh, pet animal.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion. Let me, let me just preface, and I, and I appreciate the, the concerns raised by the, the people in the neighborhood, but that's why we have code enforcement, whether it's, you know, a cow may be something different, but, but when you have dogs and chickens and everything else that might, you know, just because you have a cow, you know, if you have a bunch of dogs that you don't take care of and groom them, the smell can be just as bad.
I have, I have comments. Did you go for, to comment? Oh, you were, okay.
I was making comments, okay. No, 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 I was making comments. You know, and, and so I, I, I could, I appreciate, again, that the neighbor's concerned, but again, that's what code enforcement is designed to do, is to address those issues that, that, uh, again, whether it's a cow, chickens, dogs, but, you know, on something unsightly in your yard, you know, not taking care of your yard, those are the things that code enforcement is there to enforce, and obviously, as a conditional use, correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, if the condition, if the code enforcement becomes such of a significant issue, that condition can be, or that thing can be revoked, am I correct?
Well, we, through code, or we could bring a cause of action, an adjunctive action.
So, so there are, there are remedies available, uh, to address some of the concerns of, of, of the, of the neighborhood. So I had to say what I had to say, but go ahead.
Well, I would argue that this is just another issue that we, we should not put on code enforcement, and that's not, to me, the best way to put conditions, but I want to just preface this, I mean, again, thank you for your service, and I appreciate, you know, I'm very empathetic to, um, your wife's, you know, speech, you know, but we can't just be swayed by emotion up here, these are really serious decisions that we have to make. Listen, calling this animal a pet does not make it any less a cow. A cow's are farm animals. Even in, uh, the applicant's speech, said he spoke to many farmers about certain things, again, alluding to farm animals. As far as for therapy, these animals are already accessible to nursing homes, um, and schools, I've seen donkeys, I've seen mini, miniature horses. My boyfriend's mother recently passed, and I saw her with a miniature pony in her nursing home. So those are available, um, we don't need to be to, you know, putting in things that are inconsistent with our land development code for some proposed uses for our elementary schools. So again, these are not, these decisions should not be emotional, um, and I love cows, and I, I want to second one of the commenters, um, comments about the welfare of the cow, even though that's not a part of the application, cows, these animals do, you know, thrive in, in pairs, and, and part of the therapy of why people go into a farm, I was just, actually went to my friend's farm this past weekend and saw two cows and two donkeys, and they're in pairs, and they're, they're together a lot. And part of that piece in that therapy is also being on the farm and being away from everything. It's not the traffic that's right by you, the school bus, right there, which is, I, I went to, I went to, you know, um, middle school, the Tarpon Middle, and I taught there for years, so that is not, that's not the, the therapeutic cow farm, you know, um, thing that, I think that, you know, we're just being, trying to be sold here. Again, this is a, this is a farm animal, um, and I appreciate that, you know, you did come here. And I appreciate that, you know, you did come here for an application, but it sounds like the process is already in place to buy the cow. So I just think, again, this is not like chickens and every application comes separate, does not set a precedent, but we are, you know, realistic up here. And again, just listening, you know, you don't want to live on a farm, that's great, but this is not the place to have a farm, unfortunately. And again, my friend had a dream to go live there and she made it come true, but she knew she couldn't have it here. And so unfortunately, I mean, and that's just my view, but cows are farm animals and they belong on a farm with other cows and other farm animals. And I think that that's their, you know, their best use there. So that's my reasons for being against this application, thank you.
Any other discussion on the board?
Yep, I have some. I am also not for using our code enforcement. We have one code enforcement person and he's well booked. Also, I am concerned that the area is way too small for that, for the animal. I am also concerned with what the neighbor said about, you know, the hurricanes and the heat. And although I'm not the attorney up here, I would have said it, set a precedence. I mean, and that's one of my concerns. I thank you for your service, I understand, I am an animal lover, although I've never been a farm person. I, yeah.
I want to just add a couple more points. So chickens are farm animals, right? We have chickens in Tarpon Springs. We have goats, we have sheep that are in Tarpon Springs that they live for quite a long time and then they get executed, what do you call it, butchered for Easter. So I think, yeah, there are exceptions, but I understand both sides of the story, just put it in perspective that we do have unusual animals in Tarpon Springs that reside in residential areas.
Thank you, Mr. Zambellis. You'd be surprised.
You'll be surprised. Have you had any code enforcement violations?
Well, let's put it this way, there's chickens in Tarpon Springs. Okay. Well, with regard to not making code enforcement do more work, but unfortunately, that's the role of code enforcement, whether there's a violation, regardless if you have a cow, regardless if you have your grass grown too high, that's the purpose of code enforcement. If the idea is to not, to do things that does give code enforcement opportunity to police the city, then we shouldn't be passing anything.
Mr. Kuskudus, I think that what she was stating, I'm sorry. I think what she was stating is we can't pass it off on to code enforcement.
I'm not suggesting, I said that code enforcement offers a remedy, just like anything offers a remedy, any violation in your city block that you see is wrong, code enforcement offers a remedy. That's my point, is that you have remedies, not that if you let something go, it's just got to let it go, no. People have a remedy if things aren't proper, whether it's your grass is too high, whether you smell, whether it's an odor, that's the purpose of code enforcement and to not-
That's the duty?
And to handcuff, to handcuff our ability not to do things because we're worried about code enforcement. So that's, I'm just addressing the code enforcement issue. So any other comments or questions with regard to this application?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate both sides being presented here, there's valid points on both. What you're dealing with really is the unknown and it's a change. People generally are not too thrilled about change because they don't know if it's going to be this way or that way. I usually base my decisions on preponderance of whether there's a little more benefit and a little less detriment to something or the explanation and the evidence presented looks like it could go that way. I feel the family is being forthright, forthcoming and probably very responsible about what's going to go on. And as Mr. Kuskudus said, code enforcement exists to address problems, whether it's an animal type problem or a person type problem or a physical or property problem, that's part of their duties. And I've been in enforcement for over 40 years, so I'm used to dealing with anything that comes my way. And if not, you find the proper recourse and referral for it. It doesn't seem that it's likely that this is going to end anybody's world. So I'm going to be inclined to be in favor of it and what I thought of saying was, if it was a horse, I might say nay. Being it's not, I'm going to move to approve.
Okay, all right. Unless there's other comments, I'd like to call for the question.
Ms. Weaver? Regretfully, I'm going to say no. Ms. Wenson?
No.
Ms. Early?
No.
Mr. Rockaline? Ms. Francies?
No.
Mr. Zambellis? Mr. Kuskudus?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That concludes that. Next item on the agenda is board and staff comments. Before we move on to that, I'd like to take a five-minute restroom break, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Okay. Number eight on the agenda, discussion with regard to the city code regarding noise. Officer Mathis, I guess you're making the presentation?
Yeah, and before, I just wanted to make a point of order. I just, and I talked to Pat about this earlier, just about the public notice of this item, discussion of current city codes and regulating noise. There's no corresponding memorandum about like exactly how this issue was raised. I do know some of the concerns from the police, but we don't have a memorandum from the city manager, the planning director, or anybody really, didn't come from a discussion and direction from the BOC. And it does also start with some alcohol beverages ordinance, so that's just some issues that I wanted to raise before we started this.
Okay, thank you. But I think this, I know this is just for discussion, to the extent that any action needs to be taken around the presentation, I think what you're suggesting is we would need more of a notice with regard to this. Am I correct in that assumption?
It's just, there's no corresponding memorandum, just like to understand why this is being brought to us, other than Mr. Crawford's email, which I understand from the police's, the police perspective, but, you know, this, we don't, I've never seen something come to us without a memorandum. The past few items that have come to us came from a discussion and direction from the Board of Commissioners, the mobile home, the flag banner thing. So all of a sudden, this is just here, there's just a proposed ordinance. I don't want that to become a problem in the future because we know that this is an issue that the police have had, we've seen the stuff on social media, but in the future, something like this pops up and, you know, so I just want to put that out there and put that on the record. Thanks.
Okay. You're up.
Yes, so, and I do apologize that there's no memorandum. That would have been a good idea to go ahead and include one. But what we are trying to do is actually resolve that issue and turn things around to bring discussion items to the planning and zoning board first and then before we discuss the item with the Board of Commissioners. So the Board of Commissioners has not discussed this item or given staff any direction on it. This was generated by kind of a combination of the planning staff, the city manager's office, and the police department, Major Mathis is here this evening to answer questions in general about these issues. And we identified just that it's probably advisable at this point to address the noise ordinance with code updates. And we're starting with a discussion of the land development code section. So the city's codes regulate noise in two, basically two sections. The municipal code, Section 12-14, addresses noise, noise control generally. And the land development code addresses noise associated with on-premise alcoholic beverage service. That's the one we're looking at tonight. We decided to start with the land development code. The current code allows, basically establishes a distance requirement from the alcoholic beverage establishment for the, for live entertainment. So if the establishment has live entertainment, they have to be a certain distance from the boundary line of a residential zoning district. There is additional compatibility, list of compatibility factors that the planning director and city manager do also consider. I don't know, some of you may have been here when alcoholic beverage licenses went to the Board of Commissioners, that was several years ago. That was a change to make that an administrative review as far as the licenses. They're pretty much all conditional use except for package sales of beer and wine. And so those go to the city manager for signature. So these things are all reviewed by the planning department, planning director and the city manager. So again, we would like to receive feedback on a proposed draft update of the alcoholic beverage section, Section 52. We have included, in the course of that, and we'll talk through the changes here in a second, the city has looked at getting decibel meters and we do have, and Major Mathis can confirm, you know, talk about that, the police department has purchased at least one or more decibel meters. And in looking at this code, Major Crawford did go out and take some measurements, I've included that email, to give us an idea of what we're looking at in general as far as noise levels currently. So those were some preliminary measurements that we discussed in looking at this code and Major Crawford then followed up with measurements in different situations. So that's what that email is. The basic proposal is to add a section to- of the alcoholic beverage section, section fifty-two. We have included, in, in the course of that, and we'll talk, talk through the changes here in a second. The city has looked at getting decibel meters. And we do have, and Major Mathis can confirm, you know, talk about that. The police department has purchased at least one or more decibel meters. And in looking at this code, Major Crawford did go out and take some measurements. I've included that email to give us an idea of what we're, we're looking at in general as far as noise levels currently. So those were some preliminary measurements that we discussed in looking at this code. And Major Crawford then followed up with, with measurements in different situations. So that's what that email is. The basic proposal is to add a section to, to, add a section fifty-two point oh-one to this code. That basically establishes decibel level, noise limits on two different timeframes, Sunday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday. And basically, the Sunday through Thursday proposal in this draft is that you would have fifty-five, a limit of fifty-five decibels at night and seventy-five, seventy-five decibels during the day. Night would be defined as nine P M. to sunrise for Sunday through Thursday. And then daytime would be sunrise to nine P M. For Friday and Saturday, you'd have sixty-five decibels at night overnight and eighty-five decibels during the day. The cutoff there would be ten thirty P M. So you could have sixty-five decibels between ten thirty P M. and sunrise, eighty-five decibels during the day. And just to touch on the areas that Major Crawford measured. He was looking at, just down at the sponge docks and downtown during the evening hours with ambient noise. He had arranged from fifty-five to seventy-eight decibels. And then he did use the meter at our touch a truck event and stood about fifty feet away from the DJ, which if any of you have been to that event, it's a DJ with amplifiers that, you know, pretty much just sounds like a big boombox pounds the music through the, the event. The highest reading occurred at the fifty-foot distance from the DJ. That was a decibel level of ninety-eight. So that gives you an idea of, of the decibel levels for an event and for just busy areas with the, all the noises that come with that. So, um, I guess, and, and I do have some examples and just some kind of anecdotal information on, on what other jurisdictions do. If you, if you want to talk about that. Did a little bit of research today, but basically at this point, we're just asking for just some general feedback. And I should say, the municipal code, section twelve, we haven't looked at any changes to that yet. As you, as you know, from some of the applications you've looked at in the past, that ordinance, as it sits now, provides for a determination of whether the noise that's heard from fifty feet from the source is loud, raucous, is, is not acceptable to reasonable persons. So I've included that ordinance in your pack and you can see that much. So, looking for feedback?
I have a question on this one. First of all, I find two B is moya. You know, the measurements of noise in decibels is logarithmic. It's not linear in nature. So every doubling of the distance changes your noise level by six decibels. So if you look at Friday and Saturday night, levels of eighty-five decibel, that is ten times more than seventy-five decibels. Not ten more, but ten times more. So eighty-five, if, so a ten D B increase is, can be perceived as wise is loud. Now, if you considered that, if measured at a property line, let's say eighty-five feet from the noise source. If you got within twenty-five feet of that noise source, it would be a hundred and three decibel, which can burst your eardrum. So when I looked up Pinellas, Newport Ritchie, Dunedin, I think they're all around the area of seventy-two, which is good. I think the other ones look good, but I don't think anywhere should we be at eighty-five decibels. And that's really eighty-five decibels usually measured at a property line, which could be a hundred feet away. So I would just check into that number a little bit more, maybe ask an engineer or, or talk to somebody about that one. Because I think it's inconsistent with what everybody else does and it's a scary level. That's my only comment.
Okay, anybody else have a comment before I?
Well, I kind of wanted to listen to Major Mathis first to see, before we ask staff, is that okay?
That's fine, yep.
Are you part of staff presentations? I think he can bring some light to like kind of what the reasoning for some of this is.
Good point.
Okay, so I'm Major Mathis, most of you know me, I'm the admin major on this. Major Crawford did the work and went on vacation, so I'll be here to answer all the questions that I can. So I believe the, the background of this came from, you guys saw a lot of the social media stuff after we did some enforcement downtown because of the noise level. I, I'm a band kid, I don't know about decibels. I could tell you if you're flat or sharp or in tuner attitude, and that's about it. And I know loud. And I think this is, this is a little bit separate than our noise ordinance under twelve fourteen. This is not applicable to that. This is applicable to, from what I understand, something new that we're trying to get together to give our downtown businesses a little bit more leeway to have the outdoor entertainment, but not be outside of the policy or the ordinance that the city currently had. So we did buy, Major Crawford did go out and go do the decibel readings. And I think this was a happy in-between from his, the, the noted low and then noted high, which was like seventy-eight, I believe, at one reading, I believe. And they ranged from seventy-eight to ninety-eight. And so I think the city was looking at maybe a medium in that not knowing the research that you've done. And I think that's something we can go back to staff and say, let's look at this and let's see what's best for all, all people, including our businesses. And I know we referenced Newport Ritchie and Port Ritchie, but I like to think we do a little bit more and a little bit better.
Anyway, let, let him finish his, you'll, you'll have it.
No, 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 but I'm saying we do have a lot and I'm not, and I, and I'm not disagreeing with you. But I think what we're trying to do is, you know, when our officers are getting yelled at by business owners and stuff, thinking of a way to be able to have our business owners attract crowds. And that, I guess that's what this board is for, to give us guidance and what we need to do and how we need to put these in place.
Well, let, let, let him, let, let him, hold on. Let, let him finish his presentation and then what we're going to do like we were doing before. We'll have our opportunity to go down the road and make, well, I know, but I'm going to do this in a systematic order.
But right now you have a proposal on, on your, on your, on your plate here. We just simply played a role in helping get the, the decibels read. We do have four of them in the city. Their goal, I believe, on Major Crawford's part is to assign one to each unit on patrol. We have four different patrol squads that covers the city twenty-four seven. So those will be readily available so the officers can go out and read. So I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions from a police officer standpoint or?
We'll start on this end, because we started on the other end before, so go ahead.
Thank you, Major Mathis. First, can you let me know what kind of, what kind of decibel reader? Because I was just going to get one online.
Okay, I will, I will get with Major Crawford.
I just want like a decent one because I live really close to one of these. Because it's not just downtown at the docks and Alter nineteen, it's, it's multiple like locations. And, and some people aren't aware of the social media stuff because not everybody's allowed on the community page.
Right.
But just to let know that there's some, you know, people downtown, you know, that have complained about some of the, the bars. And it's not necessarily that the timing is just the, you know, the loud. And then they don't have to like stop, but apparently they, I don't know if they just can't.
And, and I can't say this from a music standpoint. On a clear crisp night, sound travels further. Next to water, it amplifies and it travels. On a, most of our summer nights coming up, God kind of help us all. It's a little bit thicker, the air's thicker, so sound doesn't travel as far, right? So I think that's why we were trying to get the footage thing done and go to more of a decibels. And, and, and I'm glad you did, I don't, I don't know that research, so I'm glad you did it. And it gives us a little bit of more forethought of what we can add into this and make this a more complete, comprehensive ordinance for the betterment of all businesses and residents. But I, I do know from being a band kid, you get a clear crisp night, sound travels and it goes.
Well, and I'm glad, like, I, I understand why you want it, because you have to, you have to have some guidance, right? And so the other thing, before I get back to fifty-two, I did want, because you brought up the band, I had a concern that I heard in the past couple of months. And if, if we're going to do this, I think it might not just be for outdoor and indoor entertainment. Because people that do live on the west side of town, as we discussed today. I love the band like you do, and everyone loves the band, but they practice a lot. And the people on that side of town behind Florida Avenue, like calling south over there and behind that, don't necessarily want to hear all the time and wondering if there's a type of, not necessarily with this, but like something that we can do to, because the band has to practice, but between the school, right, and then because it's not that they're anti-band, but it's just that.
It's a lot.
Really loud.
I think that's enumerated in chapter twelve point fourteen in the ordinance.
But because the planning and zoning department is now doing stuff like this and discussion, I wanted to bring it up, that's an issue that I've heard from residents, so.
I can tell you that the school, along with the district, along with the neighbors, put in a plan that has been in place for five years to mitigate that. That I do know that it's gone. They have worked with the school district, the, the city residents around, and I do know that there has been a plan in place.
And then, just again, I know Pat mentioned, how does the alcoholic beverage? Because again, this, this was noticed, I understand that the noise thing was noticed as just discussion of current city codes regulating noise. And then the alcoholic beverages is, is in here. I guess it's because that's going to come after it, but then the conditional use approval is coming out of that. And I just want to make sure that like any more decision-making that we give to staff is always take, that we take away from any board that goes through us or the B O C is, is taking away like the voice of, of the people. So I don't, I don't really know how alcoholic beverages got looped in here. And I don't know if you can answer that or Pat can.
Because we have two, two places in our codes that address noise specifically. One of them is the alcoholic beverage section. I'm not sure what you're asking, that's why we're starting with that.
Okay, but there's no notice to the public that we're discussing anything to do with alcohol?
It's on your agenda, this is a discussion item, so there's no.
No, just says regulating noise.
Right, but it's under a discuss, board and staff discussion.
If you, if you're counting on the public.
This won't come back to you as an ordinance, legally advertised. I'm, I'm not sure how else to notice it besides the agenda.
Alcoholic beverages and noise would have been a little bit more clear, I think, I mean, since it's the first.
Oh, you mean the title of the discussion item? Okay, we can change that.
Yeah, it's important, yeah.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
I mean, it is.
No, no, I just want to go off.
I advertise the agenda, well, this is really, so this is, this is highly important. This is outgoing, this is coming straight to us. And we're really having people like at least look at the agenda.
I know. I think moving forward, I think we talked about moving forward. You know, should it have been, I don't care about the comment earlier, should have, probably should have been, but.
Well, that was a different, that was in the memorandum, this is an entirely different thing that's added in.
But, but well, they'll have an opportunity.
And I'm putting it on the record, that's all.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Bellis? Speaker, your microphone.
The noise readings, I saw that you had it different times of the day. I was curious, did you take noise reading during morning rush hour and evening rush hour of the traffic?
I'm not going to lie to you, I didn't ask for specifics from Major Crawford exactly the time or day.
They would be curious to know what those readings are.
I know the email, it says from afternoon hours to early morning hours, the medium, the, the readings range from this. This is normal traffic car noises and ambient sounds, and then during the truck, touch a truck. I don't know if it was like what we consider rush hour from zero six to zero nine hundred or six A M. to nine A M., excuse me, or from five P M. to eight P M. I don't know if those were the hours specified, I don't know exactly when he went out and did it. I just got it from the email that he sent. But if you want, I can do a follow-up, Pat, and get that to you. Yeah, I can do a follow-up and get that back to you.
And my second part to the question, when was the last time we did such a noise level study? Is this the only one we've done in years?
I would, I would say so.
So, so it was triggered by city manager and planning department and police?
Well, I, I, I think what happened was there was a, there was an event that went on downtown and we went out and did some enforcement action on that event because people in the area were upset with the noise event that happened. That triggered the owner of the business to do some things on social media, from what I recall. And then the noise study was, this was brought up, I believe, after that. My kind of correct in that.
And the third part would be, so I see the, what we have on Tarpon Avenue, what's that called? Island on, what's the night on?
First Friday.
First Friday. First Friday? Have we ever done any decibel?
Well, the reason, don't want to take away from like the first Friday things because that's a permitted event that kind of gets around the ordinance a little bit, yes. So those are, those are different permitted events that are, that are brought through city staff, approved by staff, and then approved by the board of commissioners.
Yeah, but with all due respect, that's a function that creates noise should not be treated any different than those that are doing out there.
I agree.
Yeah, it's got to be fair for everyone, city functions that are permitted versus ones that are not permitted.
That's up for the boards to decide. I, I just enforce the ordinance in the laws.
And I commend you for that.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Major, and thank you, Pat. And just so you all know, you were all in the upper sixties to low seventies in this discussion. Here, I have noise meter apps and they're very, very compatible with meters in the hundreds of dollars. Because I've been using them for thirty-something years. Everything from cabaret clubs, motorcycle noise, bands, parties, Christmas displays with music and such. There, there should be a happy medium and I commend you for, for establishing some sort of criteria for this, both with the level and the times. A lot of it seems to be incident dependent, where the spirit of the law and the letter of the law sometimes are a little, little bit apart. It's something that we need to look at from all angles. And this way, like you said, you have a standard that's applicable. If somebody's one or two points above, should they get a citation or summons? Probably not, but a warning. And the main thing is, is to resolve whatever the concerns are, both of the enforcement arm, the entertainment arm, the business arm of everything, so that there, there can be exceptions to the rules, like you mentioned first Friday and other events like that. And people are aware of it. And we used to say if the best thing you can do is invite your neighbors to your noisy party, this way they're all part and part of it. As this is a work in progress, I, I think we'll eventually arrive at a result that, that makes everybody a little happy and a little unhappy, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I love music and I love to dance. And I also enjoy sitting on my deck and listening to the music on the canal from Punch City Brewery. And I love it. I'm not against business, I'm a business owner. I only know as an engineer that eighty-five decibels, as measured from a property line to maybe eighty feet to a hundred feet away, seems excessive to me. I'm just saying more, and, and you do have to watch out for some of these meters because it's not just noise level, it's the frequency of the noise and the amplitude of the noise. So low noises are different than high noises for longer period of time. So anyways, but what I hear is ninety decibels is a good, good read for great dancing.
Um, I had, actually, I did not have a, a, a special event permit for Easter. We had a hundred, Nick's been to my Easter parties, had about a hundred people. We had a D J, neighbor called. Um, I was warned, hard to turn down. Because noise carries, so the following year, we actually invited the person and everything was kumbaya. But I I just, um, I don't know, and I appreciate you showing that to me, I don't know what seventy-five decibel sounds like. I'm watching your meter and we're in the sixties and seventies, okay? Which, at this level, it's pa, it's fine. Uh, depending on, you know, how far away I am, obviously, if I'm trying to watch T V and I hear something this loud. Uh, you know, at the band, because I live, you know, where I live, I live close to the high school. You know, that may be a little bit excessive. I, I'm a little bit different with this, with with a couple of my board members here. Um, I think special events are special events, and you make application to have a special events. Um, because if you had a special event and you had a very popular band, if you can't hear them, because you're too far away, you don't hear them really well. You know, you you you're defeating the purpose. I'd hate to have Eric Clapton come in and I can't hear him.
Um, I don't think we're.
I I know, but I, but but there's a reason why you have a special event. And I, and I don't know what, I I think if the decibels that you're talking to are for normal. Monday through Friday, events at a downtown, at a brewery or whatever, it's it's one thing. I don't know if you have a separate. Um. Or there would be, excuse me, a separate level for special events, and I know those special events stop at a certain time. Can I speak to that real quick? Please. I I had the privilege of being taught by the legendary Sherry Jacobs when it comes to a lot of these things. Um. Usually, when we approve a special event that we know is going to create a lot of noise or something for the surrounding community. We make the applicant, correct me if I'm wrong. Get, um, written letters and approval signed by the people that are going to be impacted around. Um, so and for instance, my my friend from school who calls me out, I love her, no. Um, the band, when they do their event, we make sure that they get letters from everybody eh eh around to say that we're having this event. Here's a ticket to the event, um, we're sorry for disrupting you, and I don't think that that's something that um, that we should move away from. We try to get them, well, I know for the people along Gulf Road, I can't say for further back, because we didn't. Um, I know we were looking at another event this past year that we were going to move from one place to another. That we told the applicant, there's a neighborhood that abuts this event that you want to change it to. Make sure that the people in this neighborhood and the majority of them agree with this event, so that we know that the noise is going to go up. We know that we're going to do the the special event that goes above the ordinance that we have. So we make sure that we get that in writing before it comes to the committee, we approve it, and then we send it to the board to say, hey. You're not, you maybe won't get a hundred percent of the neighbors, but we try to get eighty to ninety percent to say, we understand this event's happening and. This is our clearing cutoff date or or time for these events. So sorry to cut you off, Mr. Chairman, but I wanted to clarify that. I appreciate that, because that answers one of my questions. Um, well, uh, in the evenings, obviously, i- i- if it's a violation, you have these decimeters that would be. With with in patrol cars that would be able to. So there's four of them, and I'm going to assume Major Crawford is going to give every shift supervisor or designee. Uh, to uh, to have out, or they'll be placed in the dispatch and you can run up, grab it and come out and do it. Um, that way, so I would assume in case the supervisor's off and we have an acting or interim supervisor, there's one readily available, it'd be upstairs in dispatch. Go and grab it, log it out and come out and do do what you got to do. Okay, okay, um, any other? By the way, I'm the admin major, I can't tell Joe what to do on the operations side, but that's what I would suggest to him.
I have a few more, I have a few more comments. So, um, first of all, I just want to point out that we can't, Mr., like trust Mr. Rockline's app, whatever, thank you, but. I'm not making a decision based off an app on a phone. Um, so my main concern is that in this, this is why, and it's nothing to do with anyone here, it's just the process. Is the, we need a balance of what the bus, what's good for the business owners and the residents. And my concern is, and this is what I thought, that this was basically, the catalyst for this was this incident at ours. And we and we shouldn't be making ordinances, even though I know it's an issue, based on that without public notice, because listen, I saw the comments on that. And if everybody was aware that this was an issue tonight, this would not, room would not be empty. And that's, that is my main concern, is we cannot do that, and that's, that is the whole reason behind the importance of public notice, that everybody gets. You know, a chance to talk, and the touch a truck was an event as well. So I think that before we do something like this, it would be easy, now that we have the readers, to go out to the restaurants. I can get, you know, a list of like the, the ones that have the music at night. That way they can be tested at those places, not in an event, right, to see like, okay, whiskey distillery. Um, what's another one I've heard, um, the, the, the food, the one that came for the food truck, um. Brighter Days, Hours, um, it used to be Morgan Mays. All these places that play music and just do some tests there, and maybe we can play some music so we can actually have like an understanding, because I don't know what the decibels are either. Right? So, you know, I just think that those examples, I just like this, these numbers to all of us are just kind of like. And I wasn't complaining, but the, actually with the residents were, was the practice, so that was just another issue, but you know I love it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just think that the issue that I have my concern with is just that all of this stuff is like strange numbers to us and like. And I think it would better suit the police to find out where the property lines or these properties are now. Go do these things and see how it sounds on the night of a Saturday, when, because I know what it sounds like.
Okay.
And like what I was doing with my own research, which is allowed, because this is not a quasi judicial, like, like some, like outside of a certain amount of feet, like fifty to decibels is just not harmful, like to your eardrums. Which is like, well, that's good if it's not going to burst my eardrum.
Right.
But it's still going to be in my home, like, I don't think that's the standard that we don't want, is it, well, it's not going to kill you. We we just want some quiet enjoyment, so we have to, you know, I understand that the loudest voices are a lot of times the business owners. And they don't want this stuff, and I get it, but we have to make sure the residents have a say in this too, because they're the ones that are going to be complaining. It'll be easier on the police if they don't, you know, when they're out there with a radar gun and says, I can't do anything. This is that, and then all of a sudden you find out, wow, this is terrible, this is way too loud, I wouldn't like this either, you know? So I mean, I I don't even, and I get the events, I understand the events, it's it's different. But um, I just don't think any of us can make a decision based on any of this without maybe just going back to the drawing board and. Doing some more research and an expert, I think, would be great, because St. Pete Beach. They, I mean, if you look at their meetings, they have had, um, it was like the Red, White and, this is bar, Red, White and whatever, they have, it's over across the water. And they had a, the meeting was full of people, they had a whole presentation on this, and people were talking, I mean, it is a big issue, it's a big tourism city. Um, so it definitely is something that we don't want to just rush into like this, because it's going to have really bad consequences for everybody involved with, and including the police, because. Again, I don't want you guys going around being decibel police, like.
Appreciate it.
Shooting decibel guns.
Yeah, um, so I just want to go back to the. Yeah.
And I do have a couple of clarifications on things whenever.
First, a question for Patricia. Patricia, special use, is that, that permit open to per, private citizen, a business?
Yeah, that was one of the items I was going to address, so there are two types of events. One is a city special event, that's a city sponsored event, first Friday is a special event. The other kind would.
Different type of special permit?
It it's, it's a city sponsor, the B O C approves that, touch a truck, first Fridays, um, I don't know. And either, you know, seafood festivals, the, all that stuff is a special event that the board approves. That has parameters that go with it, as Major Mathis mentioned, that the board approves, for example, first Friday ends at ten o'clock. Um, good, good example. When you're doing a private event. Um, the example, I think you you guys mentioned, normally, people would pull a temp, a temporary use. From the T R C, good example is, this past weekend, we had a St. Patty's Day. Three-day event that the T R C reviewed and approved. We set our limits, and Major Mathis can attest, because he reviewed it, we did set ours on the music earlier than what they wanted. Um, and we can do that as a condition on temporary events, not, not everybody.
Okay.
Who has an event, comes in and asks the T R C, and that's when they get.
I hear it. All right, so you have city event, do you foresee that the city event will have decimal levels set? And then you have special permit, do you perceive setting decimal limits on both? Because both create sound, and to me, just say that the city event, because it's a city event, you don't have a decimal limit? That's not being realistic.
I. I think that's something that's got to be clarified through one of your boards, I don't think we're, I don't think we're, we should answer that question, but.
No, no.
For sure, I think that's something that, I, this looks like it was, it's a brand new, um, like we're coming up with, and I think, yeah, no, no. And so what I mean by that, I think that's something that, um, we should staff between your boards and the Board of Commissioners. And 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 give a remedy for us to enforce. Um, like she said this last weekend, there was an event, we have this special events committee, we go through all that together, and I went back to Patty and said, absolutely not. This is a Sunday night, we're going to reduce it, if they want to have their event, they're going to review, reduce the timeline on a Sunday night, because we have people, and then. We bounce that off each other, she may say, I want this or that, the fire department, there's a bunch of boards involved. And that, that help us make a decision that, that's best for that application to get approved to go through.
One last comment, as critical as it is to have these levels set, it's even more critical to have the right test process. Because you can't go into one place and be twenty feet away from something, and the other place can be fifty feet and be ten feet. Because that distance will skew you. Every doubling is six decibels up space, so from ten to twenty, you're going to go six decibels up or down. So, and in large areas, it's almost going to have to be some kind of averaging, and and it's not that easy.
What what I, I I would suggest maybe to the board, to the chair, I I would. We're, we're police officers, we deal with law.
I think.
No, no, what I would say is.
Your engineering group here and ask them to help.
And and I think that's something the board, if the chair and the board wants to make a motion to send up to the commissioners to to hire somebody else to do that.
Let's keep, let's just keep everything in order, and I I apologize, but.
Yeah.
I want to, any bells over here, have any questions?
No, no, I I wasn't, I I hope I didn't come off rude, I just wanted to.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to do a.
Yeah.
A, a, an, an order here.
Yeah.
Um, um, rather than we start going back and forth.
Yeah, yeah.
You could call for a motion, Mike, because I'd like to make.
I don't, I don't think there's a motion, I think.
Yeah, but we can't, but we could just sort of.
Take a recommendation to get.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation that that we recommend the board do a study or something.
Let's wait till we're done.
Oh, I thought we were done, I'm sorry, Robert.
Um, because we skipped, and I don't know if anybody else on this side has any more comments. Okay, all right. So I have one question. So if somebody was having a party, just a regular party, whether it's Easter or whatever. And and here's what, here's my thought. If so, if the officer, the officer was called based on a noise complaint, and they come out with their decimeter. Okay, and they measure, and it's within that range, then that complaint is deemed not a, you know, an invalid complaint? Or or. The reason I ask the question is I could see somebody having a party, and I'm not going to, I'll use, I don't want to use mine as an example, but let's say I'm having a birthday party, and I have a D J. And and the neighbor did hear the D J. And and so they call the police, the police come out, and it's, it's not extremely loud, but they've got a D J. And the question then becomes, and this is where your scientific information is valuable, at what point? Do, because otherwise you could say, no one could have a party, because you could always hear the neighbor next door.
Well, I I think that's enumerated under twelve fourteen, under the noise ordinance, that's a separate ordinance, and under twelve fourteen is fifty feet.
But with a decimeter, with a decimeter. Because, to give you my example, the officer came, came out, he could hear the noise, okay? Well, you're going to have to turn it down, but if you, if the officer had a decimeter and 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 under the code, if it says. You're under that threshold, I could, or anybody could have continued on with their event or party, now that's why I'm needing a special per, application.
I think, I think we're getting the two ordinances mixed up.
Okay.
There, you have ordinance under fifty dash point, excuse me, fifty point oh two, which specifically talks about the bars and restaurants and stuff like that. And then you have the nu, the enumerated noise ordinance, loud and raucous house parties under twelve fourteen, I believe.
I understand, but if you're going to visit nu, noise ordinance, would we not be doing a disservice unless we address it? You know, across the board.
Or permitted events, is what you're saying.
Uh, I would leave that up to you guys to see how you wanted to address it.
Could I ask the attorney a question?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Zausman, would, would you say that there are experts that are available to do studies?
Audiology.
Around some, an issue, an ordinance like this?
Just, just so you know, this is one of the more difficult ordinances there is, and it's been done every way possible with the decimal. With the uh, uh, reasonable person standard, I mean, it is, and no one has been able to really. Get a good grasp on these ordinances. All we can try to do is um, put things in place that are more really honestly. Reasons to go to someone's house and say, please, you may not know that you're, you know, you're making too much noise, please, could you turn it down? Same, try to times at night for bars, restaurants, that's really what these are, these are not ones where we're going out to try to prosecute people. You know, um, shut down their businesses. Could you use those in certain situations as noise and other problems? Sure. But those are really ones that are just, basically, they don't care, right? But this is trying to get some general guidelines in place, so that when we go out and and the police officers go out, they can say, look. You may not be aware, but here's the, here's what we have in place, that's really what these are, but to get a definitive, guaranteed, you're going to win by bringing these to court. They don't exist.
Mr. Chair, can I just say, um, and I think I could say this on behalf of the, the, the chief. Our goal in all of this, as your police department, is to get compliance. And understanding between the business owners, the residents, and the entire community. I don't think there's a one size fit all, um, for every situation. In your neighborhood, they may complain, in some other neighborhoods, they may not. Our job is to handle the issue as they arise, but have some backing that we may need in case we need to take enforcement action.
Yeah, but but wouldn't you say, if there was a standard, I know that the, the, a standard is sort of nebulous. But if say there is a standard, isn't it better to have a standard, whether it's a decibel, whether you consider it loud or not loud? That somebody with a decimeter could come out and and say, okay, you are below that level. You know, you, you, you've got a neighbor who will, who'll call the police if their, if your dog barks. Or your neighbor that calls the police if the leaves on the, on your tree fall in their yard. It happens.
Right.
Okay?
Oh, I know.
And 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 so to have some, something definitive that allows, actually, it's a tool for the police department to come out. Instead of, you know, just say, well, I think you may have to turn it down, they could definitively say, look, it's below the, the standard. That we have set is criteria, whether it's the business owner, or whether it's somebody in a residential community. I think you just can't have, if you're going to look at setting benchmarks, I think it should be benchmarks across the board, whether it's a business benchmark or a residential benchmark. So that's just, you know, and.
One, I just, one question. Um, have you seen a rise in noise complaints? Or what, how much do we average a year, would you say?
Oh.
Is that in the city manager, is that the annual, the monthly reports?
I I don't know if those are in the monthly reports, but I can, I can get you.
It would be helpful.
It's hard to enumerate a noise complaint, it really is.
When someone calls in and says there's a noise and they're complaining about noise.
That, that could be a dog barking, and we'll note it as a noise complaint in our system. So it's, it's hard to differentiate, so like if if you called and said, my neighbor's dog is barking, it's keeping me, the dispatcher may log it as a noise complaint or an animal complaint. So that I have to sit through and sift it. If you want that info, I can probably get somebody on it, um, but.
I just think, if we're going to react to something that's like you're saying, I'd like to just understand, how many complaints do we get?
We get several on on, I don't want to call any businesses out, but do we get certain businesses that 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 do play a lot of loud music and?
Like, a, a hundred and less a year? Is it a hundred and more?
Probably get one or two or three a month, you know? Um, because once you usually make contact, they fix it and then they go away for a couple of months and then they, they come back. Um, but again, um, it's, it's hard to enumerate that, that noise complaint based on how we coded in the system.
Okay. I just, I do have one comment for a recommendation, and that's, I think that my fellow attorneys on the board will appreciate that for business owners, it goes a long way to reach out to your neighbors, that you know that you're gonna play loud music and offer them a free dinner or something.
Alright.
I mean, seriously, yeah, really, like, it, it really would, if somebody acknowledges that they're gonna be a problem in your area, just be nice and kind to them and they will not call sometimes.
Did I hear recommendation in there, could you make?
And then, and that is my first recommendation. And a second is that, I, I just think that maybe we do, uh, recommend a study, but even if it's in-house by the police or something like that, to get some further in-house, um, data.
Data.
Right.
So can we just clarify with you guys what you want us to come back with?
I, I think, yeah, I think with your information, I mean, you, you have some very good comments. But having more data with regard to, cause I don't, I don't, like you said, I don't know what sixty decibel sounds like or ninety decibel sound like. I know when it's loud, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
But, 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 go ahead. I, I, I think if, it, okay. You, if you have a talent, you have a board member that has a talent that, that might be able to offer some guidance with regard to parameters. And whether you have that, whether you have that, that expertise in-house or not, you know, there's a board member that has some, some talent in that regard. But I, I think more, define more as to, as to benchmarks would probably be better. And I'm throwing a lot at you, Officer Mathis, but, uh, I'm sorry, General Mathis, I'm sorry.
We, we, I've got all the questions, we'll, we'll, um, try to answer those questions. I heard three or four ideas of what to measure. Rush hour traffic, first Friday, um, permitted events. I don't know if there were any more specifics, different distances, I think I heard. Uh, we will reach out to, um, uh, Board Member Swenson regarding her expertise. Um, we will bring that back, I did, I did research that, but I, I will bring it back. I, I looked at five and to tell you the truth, only two that I looked at had decibel meter levels, the other, the others, uh, have the ordinance we basically have now, the loud and raucous, so. So it's, I'll, I'll cast that net further. Look at St. Pete Beach, I think I heard.
You know what the charging order is then? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, okay, and before we adjourn.
I know you adjourned, I, I did tell you, um, yes, and if you allow me, you guys don't invite me very often, they, they make me come on Tuesday nights.
General Mathis.
More often than not, but, um, I, I would like to say, um, this is the first time I've been to one of these meetings and, um, it's, it's a privilege to know what you do and, and how you have to make these decisions, um. I, I wouldn't wanna be in your space, um, at all. Uh, but I did wanna tell the chair, my good friend here, that, uh, he said Matthias earlier.
I met him.
And, and I, I like the joke that he's known me since I was a young man and I'm not Greek, but I think by the time we leave, he'll make me Greek. But again, I, I thank you all and I thank you for your kindness to me, um, getting this solved.
Are those, are those, uh, uh, what are those on your shoulder? Are those?
Those are oak leaves.
Yeah, they should be stars.
Thank you, okay, that's why I call you General Mathis. Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
And congratulations on your, your studies for FBI.
I leave next week for two months and, uh, it'll be a lot of fun, but thank you.
He's a very dear friend and I apologize that I butchered his name in any event. Uh, okay, uh, any board comments? And I do have one before I adjourn. Um, and, and, and let me just say this, and, you know, if, if I become short with anybody on the board, I apologize. I, you know, when I was not the chair, I was the first to jump in and start talking whenever there was a presentation. And, you know, I sit here on my hands, letting everybody speak first, and it's become very difficult for me. And, um, but I, I, my, my intent is to try to have an semblance of a process. And if I cut you short, I apologize. Um, but, you know, one of the things that I wanna try to narrow down is our ability is to stay focused on the application and, and, uh, and hopefully, the, the thought of that was getting us out a little even earlier, but I, I see that I'm failing in that regard.
I think you're doing a great job.
So, thank you. Um, alright, so any other comments before I adjourn? Thank you.